With returning from executive session at six o'clock on October twenty first, two thousand twenty five. Item number sixty eight dash one in regards to the fire and EMS negotiations. I would go ahead and ask the court for the court's authorization to finalize negotiations with the City of Eagle Pass based on the terms that have been granted to me and the based on the terms that have been granted or that have been discussed by the court in executive session. And to finalize those terms with city administration to and to also execute the agreement once it has been finalized. Is there a motion to that effect? Motion has been made by Commissioner Rios. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ramos. Discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number. Item number. It's the one we took up. We may have to go back into executive session shortly, but we're going to take care of some other items shortly. That's the only item right now that we'll be taking action on. Other items will remain pending for executive session. Item. Number forty eight. Discussion and appropriate action to approve, reject, request, or proposals for on-call engineers for Maverick County. I think that I'd like to just make a modification first that we may amend the item that it state discussion and appropriate action to accept or reject. Is that correct, Ms. Barrios? To accept or reject on that items. Is there a motion to amend the item to read as directed?
So moved.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Ramos. Second by Commissioner Reese. Discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item has been so amended. Is there a motion to open item? Motion has been made by Commissioner Reese. Second by Commissioner Rios. Discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Moving forward on this item. So for this purpose, the court did or we did have an opportunity to meet with the purchasing department.
There were the I D. for review and then we had those media that applied. And I believe the recommendation was to accept all. And we will need to move forward with.
So those would be negotiated contracts at this time. So the committee, of course, did meet. The committee was comprised of myself, Commissioner Ramos, Mr. Oscar Garza from the planning department, Mr. Rudy from the purchasing department. And those were the four that were assigned to review the exact proposals. The committee did meet and we did discuss this and based on, of course, the expertise of all of the engineers. We moved forward with it. We would have those engineers presented to the court for purposes of negotiating contracts and to bring those back for final approval of to the court. The court did meet on those specifically. If there's no further questions on that.
I'd like for the record to, do you have the list of the engineer? Please read them.
I don't have that.
Rudy would have.
Look, is it here on the?
Item forty eight.
Do we have it on the, yeah, do we have it on this? The information?
It is on your.
Backup?
Yes.
Right here.
Sixty four?
Do you have them there?
Thank you.
Other questions? Very well. And if there would be a motion to go ahead and proceed. Motion has been made by Commissioner Ramos. There's a second. Second by Commissioner Rios. Discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Moving on to item number forty nine. Discussion and appropriate action to approve our local agreement with Valverde County for jail inmate housing. This, of course, has been the standard agreements that have been sent over for them. These have been reviewed by legal and Mr. Groves, of course, had this contract and has fully reviewed it as well. But these are the agreements that have been set forth by the county on these matters. Motion has been made by Commissioner Ramos. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Rios. Discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number fifty. Discussion and appropriate action to approve the two thousand twenty five, two thousand twenty six global aerospace insurance policy for the airport general liability coverage.
So moved it.
Motion has been made to by to open this item by Commissioner Ramos. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Rios. Discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item is so opened. Mr. Valdez?
We're still gonna have the same insurance. It went up three hundred dollars.
On this purpose, are there any questions specifically regarding to the coverage? Not? Is there a motion to approve? Motion has been made by Commissioner Ramos. There's a second? Second by Commissioner Rios. Discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Commissioner Ramos? Unanimous. Item number fifty one. Discussion and appropriate action to accept an open request for qualifications for professional engineering services, safe streets and roads for all. S S four A road safety action plan and any action thereto. R F Q. Number four Y two five dash zero one. Is there a motion to open? Motion has been made by Commissioner Rios. There's a second? Second by Commissioner Ramos. Discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Item is so. Total of three? The clerk has advised the court that there are three packets that have been received for the safe streets for all. The first one was received on September thirtieth, two thousand twenty five at two fifty seven P M. Being submitted by M B C, Messina, Bose, and Copeland and Associates, Inc. Engineering. The second was submitted at nine thirty nine A M. On October third at the clerk's office, submitted to the court with four packets by Hafen Associates. And there was also a U S B submitted with that. And the third is submitted on October third at twelve forty nine P M. With four packets being submitted by A G three group alongside with a U S B also being submitted. These have all met the time requirement of timeframe requirement and have all been submitted within the necessary time period that is required. Therefore, at this point, the court, is there a request to move forward with accepting these and moving forward with the scoring process? There is there anything else further that needs to be done, Mr. Rios? Very well. There's a motion made by Commissioner Rios. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Ramos. Discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number fifty two. Discussion and appropriate action to approve a resolution to nominate Isidro de los Santos a fourth as a member of the Board of Directors of the Maverick County Appraisal District and representation of Maverick County. Is there a motion to open? I motion has been made to motion to open by Commissioner Reese. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Rios? There for the discussion? Now, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item is so open.
Judge, have you talked to Mr. De los Santos? He agreed to this?
Is there any wishes of the court? If not, we would just need to make sure that we submit this name in order for the ballot to be framed by the appraisal district on to move forward with the next steps. So we would just need to submit this by formal resolution. Is there a motion? Motion has been made by Commissioner Rios. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Ramos. Discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number fifty four. Discussion and appropriate action to approve the equitable sharing agreement and certification for the two ninety third judicial district attorney. Is there a motion to open item? Motion has been made by Commissioner Rios. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Reese. Discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Item is so opened. Members from the attorney's office, district attorney's office. Yes, good afternoon.
In this report, it's the equitable sharing report that is required to be filed by the district attorney's office every year. The report has been submitted to the auditor's office for review and approval.
Auditors, is there anything that needs to be finalized on this report? Action that's required to move forward then to approve the actual equitable sharing. There is a motion by Commissioner Ramos. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Rios. Discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number fifty five. Thank you, ma'am. Did you all have any other items? Yeah, okay. Thank you. You all are excused. Moving forward to item number fifty five. Discussion and appropriate action to approve rental contract with Del Rio Highway Center L P for storage unit for the elections department. This is, is there a motion to open item? Motion has been made by Commissioner Rios. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Ramos. Discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item is so open. Is there a motion to approve the item? This is the basic rental agreement for the storage for the election department records that are for record retention. Motion has been made by Commissioner Rios. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Ramos. Discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number fifty six. Discussion and appropriate action to approve the amendments to Maverick County policy. For this purpose, you all have, well, let me first start off by opening the item. Is there a motion to open? Motion has been made by Commissioner Rios. Is there a second? Second has been made by Commissioner Ramos. Discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item is so open. Members before the court, our court members, before you, you all have what is the revised purchasing policy on these matters. This purchasing policy, of course, has been revisited and visited with the legal team alongside with myself and auditors has also redlined and made revisions which have been placed into the consideration of the actual policy itself. With those considerations that were that were brought forth. There are specifics. I don't know, Ms. Barrientos, on the final version that was submitted by Mr. Grove. There were inclusive of the concerns I think that you had had for them. There were some minor edits that you had requested. And I believe that everything has kind of pretty much gone through there, but if you can do a quick rundown on this, just to kind of review on the on the actual policy and then we can still come there.
I know on the policy, we just received it last night, so we had a chance to kind of take a quick look. Take a quick look this morning. Item four point four, which is page seven. I believe Mr. Grove did remove them, the exceptions to that do not require a purchase order on there on E, employee reimbursement for business travel. We asked him to remove that because we would still require the purchase order for travel. And then payments on credit card accounts. That was, oh, we asked him to remove that because we do need the purchase orders with the receipts from each department when you use our Lowe's, our, I think it's our Lowe's, C T V, Walmart card. So we do need a purchase order from each department to know which departments to charge. Typo on page ten, which I believe he fits. Page eleven on section four vendors requiring a credit card.
I don't have it.
On page eleven, there was an exception on number one. An exception sheriff's office own designated credit cards, which the only credit cards that they have as far as the auditor's office is aware is that Exxon card for the transport office. They go out of town. So we asked for that to be removed and they have to follow same policies as everybody else on those cards and provide the receipt and purchase orders for those. Those normally don't come to our commissioning court because they're part of the facility because it's huge, but they still have to provide. He had a question just on the change orders, but he clarified that for us. I believe those were the major issues that we saw there. There were some items as far as on page fourteen. It's professional services, two point one A. He's describing some of those laboratory services, consulting, medicine, I mean, medicine and surveying, et cetera. I I would just like to have that removed. I didn't tell him on the et cetera or to just narrow it down. I just don't want to create any confusion. I did talk to him or we did talk to him this afternoon. My whole entire staff has to review this. If we have any questions or concern, we will be meeting with legal to review those. We want to do this as soon as possible so that we're all on this. And by we, I mean auditor's office are all on the same page. When things get submitted, you're not going to get different answers from anyone in our department. So we want to review this thoroughly and then create a workshop session for commissioners' court and then do the workshops, workshop sessions for all your staff.
That's good.
So they will be required to sign off on the training because if they don't comply with items from here, it would be considered like a class B or B. So they need to be made aware of that and we will emphasize that in our training. But again, you're, I need to get with all my staff so that we clearly understand everything and we're all on the same page. And there's no miscommunication on these items.
And please consider if if we have new employees to make sure that they, you got somebody runs everything through.
Yes, they will have to submit that.
I think Mr. Sanchez mentioned something like that.
I mean, the training won't be once a year or in this case, we haven't had one in a couple of years. It will be part of the new employee orientation, so we will have to have a good communication with H R and with the different departments to make sure that probably every three months just have a small workshop with the new employees if they're going to be responsible for purchase orders or purchases. Our goal is to all of us be very clear on this and that there's no delay because things were done wrong. That's the goal. According to our legal team, this new policy is supposed to make that easy.
Streamline.
So like I said, we got it last night. Not everybody in my department read it. So I need to get with my staff this week, make sure that we're all on the same page, make sure that we all understand the same thing and then develop the training workshop.
So you're not asking us to approve this?
At this point, I'm, I want to make sure that you all are aware. We can obviously proceed with these. These policies, of course, have been set forth by the state guidelines and state state law based on the changes that have been made by this new legislative session that has raised what are the limits from fifty thousand to a hundred, making those necessary requirements. And we're basing ourselves off of what is the law to make it as smooth and as quickly as possible for the for the processes of moving the purchases of any need that will not slow projects down. It will not slow the process down in this measure and in order to kind of get all of this squared away. So more than likely, you know, the court, of course, has the the option to to proceed with moving forward on the adoption of the policy for those matters. If not, of course, we've more than likely will be meeting possibly next week if we need to to where we can finalize that, but we wanted to go ahead and move forward with getting these issues addressed as soon as possible.
Because she's she's saying that something might be changed, although this is clear.
Well, the court, the court has the final discretion as far as how and what's going to be changed.
As far as the policy goes, it is commissioning court that determines how how it is written and what is on there. As long as it's, it doesn't go against what the state law provides.
Which is what this is based off of.
This is based on that.
I think we all agree that we need to make it as legal as possible. I mean, there's nobody else want to do. No, no one is willing to break any kind of laws whatsoever and we stick together that way it should be.
And again, some of the wording, we were concerned that it might be a little bit confusing because it's it's a lot of legal term. So we just had some concerns, but for now, like I said, we need to go back and read it. If if it's commissioners' court's sole decision to approve is that it as is. Again, it's just on the wording and we can address that in the training or in the workshop.
If we can change it to a layman's terms, it will be much better.
So like, let's say in that case, Ms. Barrientos, where where is your concern? Yeah, I know you mentioned as far as on those on those matters for kind of making a determination on what services were qualified. I think that section was.
And I know and what we may just need to do is just give examples. Because if we're kind of getting confused, I don't know how everybody else will do. So I just want to make sure that we are clear.
What page is that? Page five?
Okay, here, three, one. In accordance with Texas, it's page five, purchasing policy.
Okay.
Three, one. In accordance with Texas Local Government Code two sixty two point zero zero one, Maverick County Commissioners Court has appointed the county judge to make a contract on behalf of the county for number one, erecting or repairing county buildings, supervising the erection or repairing of a county building, number three, any other purpose authorized by law. Thus, all purchases that are not required to go through the competitive bidding process as provided by this policy in Texas law may be executed by the county judge. So here, we kind of had a question like, okay. They still have to go through proper purchase, they still have to follow the other purchasing policy or laws. So just because it's under a hundred thousand, it doesn't automatically get the contract get approved. It still has to be, he did follow up with. These purchases must be reviewed by purchasing, legal, and certified by the auditor. So it's so good, it it just doesn't automatically mean all contracts under one hundred thousand will be signed by the judge. So we still have to follow up with all this proper documentation, everything else. We still have to review.
So are you asking for clarification for that or what is your question?
Well, I think there was a misconception of where it says thus all purchases are not required to go through the, thus all purchases that are not required. So that's where there was a little, okay, he's just saying that those that are not required, not that they are not required. It was just an internal thing that we had, so we just wanted to clarify that and we just wanted to make sure that everything that's on here is going to be clear and just should know everything. I mean, just little things and it's just in how you read it. You may have to go back and re-read it. Everything is based on the Texas code, so it's all by the book. It's just having everybody to clearly understand. And I mean, again, we are trying, as he stated, to make things easier for everyone so that everyone clearly understands. And that was the topic of our conversation. We don't want to throw a bunch of law at you until you follow because we're not all of them. And doing so, I think, we have to our department to be sure to make it seem that we can understand what they're doing. That'll be handled in the workshop in the future. And if we have to do it more than once, you know, at the beginning, we'll raise, break.
Judge, we're having a meeting next week?
Today after the discussions that I just need to finalize, of course, with the city, if there's a need for us to have any finalization. But I mean, we can obviously bring this back for finalization. My only issue is just making sure that we finalize those terms or any questions that we have specifically with with Mr. Grove's so that way we can bring it back and finalize it. I just don't want these policies to be prolonging.
That's exactly what we discussed today.
Judge, have you seen this?
Yes.
We saw them. Not everybody in our department got to read them and I did let him know that I'd prefer for all of them to read it and understand it and that we're all on the same page. But as far as it being approved, we don't have an issue with it if it didn't see me approved tonight. If there's anything later that we think can bring back or help to bring back, we'll let you know. But as far as what we've read, we don't perceive any major issues. Just make sure that everybody understands it and they're clear on.
I'd just like to have more time to review it so that I want to make sure that if one of my P O's that I've had issues with, that I can put it to an example here that it's.
That's fine. Very well. So then if there is an understanding then from the court, we if we need to, we can always circle back and have a special meeting for next week. But I would encourage you just to finalize those terms with Mr. Grove's. The issues, of course, and it's like I I spoke with him. I said, just we need to base it off of what is the law. Let's make this as streamlined as possible and try to move forward with where we're where we're going.
That'll be our goal.
All right. That's fine.
Ms. Barrientos knows how much I want this policy.
No, that's, Ms. Barrientos knows how much I want this policy in place so that we can move forward with.
Why, Commissioner?
Our, our POs and.
I wonder why.
But I would like to review it.
So it, it's a good idea to bring it back next week.
I can't let you my microscope?
No, I, I just want to review it, make sure that we're on board.
All right. Uh, I won't ask for any, uh, specific action other than, of course, for the consideration that, uh, that if we can finalize these terms and if we can agree, uh, or till those matters can be agreed and finalized before, uh, the end of this week, um, we'll go ahead and just call for a, a quick meeting, uh, to have, to discuss those matters next week. All right. There's nothing further? No action on this item? We'll move forward onto the, uh, next item on the agenda. Um, item number fifty-seven, discussion on appropriate action to adopt and ratify the courtroom, uh, rules of decorum for the Maverick County Commissioner's Court. Is there a motion to open the item?
This is.
Motion is, motion has been made by Commissioner Reese. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner, um, Rios. Discussion. Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item is so opened. Commissioners, this is just before you, the actual, uh, item for the rules of decorum that we've had, uh, that we've adopted. It's just a reratification every fiscal year. I brought this back just for purposes of ratification on that matter. Um, identifies, of course, just, uh, the processes that have been, um, handled. And this is obviously what is submitted through Texas Association of Counties, uh, for the process of having these decorum, uh, matters put into place. So, um, simple, just, um, rules and procedures, uh, in conduct and decorum for the court. Are there questions? Not? Is there a motion?
Some.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Ramos. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Rios. Discussion. Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number fifty-eight, discussion and appropriate action to renew the Thornton, Musso and Billium, Billium, Inc. Agreement, uh, to service the chlor- uh, chlorine dioxide generator at the Maverick County Water Plant. Uh, if we could just have an amendment first, just to make a correction on that. It should be Thor- Thornton. Um, T H O R N T O N, uh, for the name correction. Is there a motion to amend the name correction on that? Motion has been made by Commissioner Rios. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner, uh, Ramos. Discussion. Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Item is so amended. Is there a motion to open the item? Motion's been made by Commissioner Ramos. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Rios. Discussion. Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Item is so opened. Commissioner?
Yes, Judge. This is just a yearly contract with, uh, for the water treatment plan. It's just, uh, the contractor that handles the generators. They test the waters and the chlorines. And that's my motion.
Motion has been done by, uh, Commissioner, or issued by Commissioner Ramos. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Rios. Discussion. Being that there is none, um, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number fifty-nine, discussion and appropriate action regarding the Maverick County Shooting Range. Commissioner, is there a motion to open?
Yes, that's my motion.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Ramos. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Rios. Discussion. Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Item is so opened. Commissioner?
Yes, Judge. This is, I'm just asking for legal to start a con- um, intergovernmental agreement. We have, um, shooting range that belongs to Maverick County and, um, it is my understanding that we have Border Patrol, Customs, um, Police Department, the Sheriff Department, the DEA, different governmental entities that use this shooting range to get, uh, certified and for practice purposes. And, uh, there's been a concern and from the different, uh, entities, which area is their area? The maintenance, uh, this air, the shooting range is out there by the airport and I just need legal to assist in drafting an intergovernmental agreement so that we can identify what each entity is responsible for. It's, I understand I've been doing research and nobody can provide me with an agreement and, uh, for insurance purposes as well, the liability issues, we need to protect the taxpayers in regards to this. So I just need, um, legal.
Yes. This would be actually, um, or the agreement would be between Maverick County and?
The, I guess the different entities that use them, the, the shooting range. We have, uh, I, I have a list of like nine different agencies that are using them, the shooting range right now. And from what I understand, there's even, uh, individual citizens that go out there and practice. And from what I understand, we don't have, uh, a contact with anybody of them. I've called, uh, I've spoken to at least five agencies. I've spoken to Border Patrol, the city, um, CBP, DEA and, and nobody can, I called the, um, the county, the Pablo, to see if they had, um, an agreement in place and they're telling me that there's none. So we need to.
All right. So then, uh, authorization then would be for, uh, authorization to, um, allow legal to explore, of course, and to provide what is a, uh, interlocal agreement, uh, I imagine with the distinct entities, uh, for purposes and to see what those purposes would be for clarification on those, uh, discussions. So, uh, in that matter, um, is there a motion then to that?
That's my.
Motion has been made for, uh, that item by Commissioner Ramos. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Rios. Discussion. Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Let the record reflect that there are four in favor and one, uh, abstention with the abstention being, uh, Commissioner Reese. Uh, item number sixty, discussion and appropriate action to accept donation from the Eagle Pass Police Department of a twenty-twelve Chevrolet Tahoe VIN number one G N L C two E zero nine C R two nine seven two zero five for the Office of Constable Precinct Two. Is there a motion to open the item? Motion's been made by Commissioner Rios. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner, um, Ramos. Discussion. Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Item is so opened. Commissioner?
So this, uh, was brought up by Constable Precinct Two. He got a, a donation. I'm just, uh, make sure his court approves of this donation of his term of life.
Very well. For that purpose, uh, the, uh, request, uh, has been made, uh, to the, uh, court. I know that once, uh, in order for that to be, uh, processed, we just need to make sure that all, all paperwork has already been submitted to the treasurer for these departments. I don't know if there's specifics that have already been submitted for, for that purpose of the insurance and for making sure that that's in order, uh, but, uh, just make sure that the constable does have that all submitted for liability purposes under the needs of the court.
How much communication?
Yes, all, all that needs to be submitted. I do know that there was a, uh, request that was submitted or a title that was submitted to me, but it was signed incorrectly. It hasn't been signed because we need to execute the acceptance of that. So I don't know if they've made that correction on that title prior to submitting that document.
You guys need to check that.
Uh, present. But not? Is there a motion to accept? Motion's been made by Commissioner Rios. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Reese. Discussion. Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Uh, item number sixty-one, discussion and appropriate action to approve the settings of a public hearing for speed bumps between two eighty-four and two ninety-nine Peach Street and between eight sixty-one and eight forty-six Frontis Street. Uh, I believe Commissioner Reese, uh, you've also asked, you've asked for an item, uh, for this item to be amended to incorporate, uh, seventeen eighty-seven and seventeen eighty-eight Calle Jalisco. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. That's right.
Very well. Is there a motion to, uh, an amend? Has been made by Commissioner, um, Reese. Is there a second?
Second.
Second has been made by Commissioner Rios. Discussion. Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Item has been so amended. The item, of course, will read two eighty-four and two ninety-nine Peach Street, eight sixty-one and eight forty-six Frontis Street, seventeen eighty-seven and seventeen eighty-eight Calle Jalisco. Those are the speed bumps, of course, for the public hearings, uh, that are being requested. Is there a motion to open the item?
To move.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Reese. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner, uh, Rios. Discussion. Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right.
I have a question.
So this is to open the item. Are we opening it?
Open it.
Opening it. Okay. All those in favor, to open the item? Unanimous. All right. Item is so open. Yes, Commissioner?
It's just a physical question. What are we going to have the hearings since people are voting here?
So we're set for, now, this will be for the next one. Uh, voting will end on the thirty-first of October. So the next, uh, public hearing will be set for the next, uh, regular meeting, which would be November the twelfth.
Until then?
Yes. Okay. So it'll be already, already over. Okay? So November twelfth, uh, will be the date set for the next regular meeting and that's when we go ahead and proceed. Okay? Um, we will need to follow up with that and I'll just need to make sure that planning, for the purposes of us making sure that public notice is through, we're going to need to follow up to make sure that we have sufficient notice on that item with legal. Okay? Um, so is there a motion to go ahead and move forward with the public hearing set for the twelfth of November in Commissioner's Court at five P M?
To move.
Motion has been made by Commissioner, uh, Reese. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner, uh, Rios. Discussion. Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Uh, item number sixty-two, discussion and appropriate action to accept donation of a twenty thirteen Chevrolet Tahoe, VIN number one G N L C two E zero six D R two six five three nine three from the City of Eagle Pass Police Department. Commissioner, uh, is there a motion to open the item? Um, item has been moved to open. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Rios. Discussion. Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Item has been so opened. Commissioner?
Yeah, this is the same, uh, rules of, second you had there. From the city to accept the donation to provide the vehicle and the truck.
Very well. Uh, motion, uh, has been made.
Yes.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Morales. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Rios. Discussion. Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number sixty-three, discussion and appropriate action to approve fiscal year twenty-five budget amendments. Budget amendments have been provided for your review. Are there any questions for the twenty twenty, let me see, sixty-three?
They both say twenty.
Yeah, they both say twenty-six, but the item, item number six, uh, twenty-six here on this one is specific. Ms. Barrientos leaves. Both of them left, including Mr. Pereira? Um, so for that purpose, uh, item number sixty-three, just for there to be clarification, uh, sixty-three, of course, will be, um, uh, the items that have been submitted, uh, on those issues. This will be for the two thousand twenty-five fiscal year. Okay. Uh, and for the fiscal, uh, year twenty-five, uh, which is listed. Item number sixty-four, uh, will be listed, uh, as a different for the fiscal year twenty-six. Uh, so for that purpose, is there a motion to approve the adj- uh, budget adjustments for, uh, fiscal year twenty-five? As you all are aware, they're closing out fiscal year twenty-five, so there might still be one other budget adjustment that should be coming next meeting, uh, to finalize those last, uh, items that need to be addressed. Is there a motion? Let me go ahead and just real quick ask for a motion to open items number sixty-three to sixty-seven. Is there a motion to open those items? Motion has been made by Commissioner Rios. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner, um, Ramos. Discussion. Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Very well. Item sixty-three to through sixty-seven are now all open. We'll just call for the questions on these items. Item sixty-three, is there a motion to approve? Motion has been made by Commissioner Rios. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Ramos. Discussion. Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number sixty-four, discussion and appropriate action to approve the fiscal year twenty-six budget amendments. On this item, uh, sixty-four, I'll just ask the court to take notice that item number twelve needs to be removed from that item as it's already been listed. It was, uh, double placed onto, uh, the twenty twenty-five when it should have just been for twenty twenty-five and not twenty-five and twenty-six. Correct? Miss, on that one? Right. So item twelve, uh, will be, uh, removed from the twenty twenty-six item. Is there a motion to approve? Yes.
I have two for twenty twenty-six.
So like, let's say this one here, that's twenty-six?
But it has the year right here. The year's right here, twenty-five and twenty-six.
So like, when you look at this one, this one says item sixty-three?
I'm looking at item sixty-four.
Okay. Item sixty-four.
They gave me two. One has a total of seventy-nine and the other one has a.
Okay, but you're looking at this one right here. You're looking at the one, do they both say sixty-four?
Yeah, they both say sixty-four.
You got an extra copy.
Maybe you got mine. That's.
Yeah, there's two for sixty-four.
And they're different?
Seventy-nine thousand.
Sixty-nine thousand.
Yes, because you had, yeah, the item, these are probably presented right now. So this is why I was telling you, the seventy-nine thousand, which was now removing the nine hundred dollars from the last one, is why it's going to be there's a slight difference. So you're going to see the, uh, item sixty-three on the other one. You want to show them?
So they're taking away this?
Yes. Okay. Yeah. They had to, they were, they did, they were placed on the wrong fiscal year. Or the clarification? All right. Is there a motion? Motion has been made by Commissioner, uh, Rios. Is there a second?
Second.
Second has been made by Commissioner, uh, Reese. Discussion. Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number sixty-five, uh, discussion and appropriate action to ratify the time-sensitive payments released by county treasurer and auditor. Is there a motion? Motion's been made by Commissioner Rios. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Ramos. Discussion. Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Accounts payable, item number sixty-six, uh, has been provided for your review as well on these items. Are there any questions regarding the accounts payable? Not? Is there a motion? Motion's been made by Commissioner Reese. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Rios. Discussion. Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number sixty-seven, warrant spending.
Sixty-six, I'm going to abstain, Judge.
Let the record reflect that, uh, Commissioner Ramos will abstain from sixty-six. Uh, item number sixty-seven, warrant spending. Uh, is there a, um, motion to approve the warrant spending that have been provided for your review?
So moved.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Ramos. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner, um, Reese. Discussion. Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. All right. All right, Commissioners, being, uh, that I believe that we've covered all items, uh, for the exception of item thirteen, fourteen, uh, there has, there's, is there any further clarification that needed to have been done?
No.
Did we? Okay. Just in case there should be any, uh, clarification, uh, I do know that Mr. Acerna has, um, reached out also in regards to that. There might be some clarification that we just need to do on that purpose, so we might just need to place, uh, these items for the meeting next week and have just a short meeting with legal, uh, with them in order to go ahead and proceed from there. Okay? So we'll address those at the next week's meeting.
Do we need to reopen?
No. No, we're fine. So, uh, which would be thirteen, fourteen, eighteen, uh, just to make sure that that way there's any specific questions from them, we can go ahead and go from there. Specific questions?
No.
No?
No, that's it.
All right. If there is none, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion has been made by Commissioner Rios. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Ramos. Discussion. Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Thank you all very much.